Thank you for coming to Fruit Heights City Council meeting. My name is John Coleman, Mayor of Fruit Heights. We're meeting within anchor location at nine ten South Mountain Road. It's in Utah, eight four zero three seven. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. And then we will do a prayer or a thought on the mark. Would you all clear your eyes?
Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father of heaven, as we humbly come before Thee, Father, on this beautiful spring day, we're thankful for the opportunity that we have a meeting here tonight as residents and city employees and those on the mayor and the city council to be able to discuss those items that are important for our community and for our city. And we'd ask a special blessing that as we have a discussion that we will be able to have the right spirit among ourselves, be able to portray and be respectful of those. And please be with us and bless our city as we go forward and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
And I have a one point three, which is roll call, Haley.
Councilmember Gary Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Saville.
Ms. Seuss.
Mayor John Paul.
Here, thank you. I have a one point four, which is city council training. Sean, yes, we put this on our agenda on everyone of our agendas or elected officials to train us on our responsibility as elected officials. And we, you have three minutes, Sean.
Thank you. I took the approach today of, I've only been around obviously for about two or three months. And so I wanted to talk about what it is to be a city council member and the kind of duties that we have and some of the, just some of the, sorry, my brain's going everywhere. The essential skill that it takes to be a city council member. So as we step into city council members, we all wear many different hats, right? We, we are responsible for crafting and enacting local laws and ordinances. We get involved with zoning and public safety and we aim to enhance the community's quality of life, not to necessarily govern it or to direct it. City council members, we obviously oversee the budget, which is a significant duty, and we do that by working with the city staff and going over it and making sure that it's physically, you know, that everything is being responsible and that we have the transparency and that we're doing what's best for our constituents. Representing constituents is essential. That's why we are here, is why we're elected or appointed, in my case, that we represent our community. We serve as the bridge between the public, the municipal government, voicing our community's concerns and advocates for residents' needs. This means we need to stay attuned to the local issues and be accessible to the people that we serve. We do a lot of strategic planning for the future and what is best for our residents, just not the here and the now. And then we also collaborate, whether it be with small businesses, whether it be the city staff, other city council members, or local organizations. We foster the partnership that drives the responsibility to do what we need to do in order to be here to represent the city. Understanding the tiny community that it is, we talk about how this is a part-time gig. I've learned really quick it is not. I, my schedule is always booked up, doesn't matter if I'm on a weekend or somebody calls or there's an email. I find myself engaging with residents or city staff or other council members. Yes, this is a part-time, but at the same time, it really can tap into your life. And this truly is an act of service of what we do to be here. Top three skills that we need to have as city council members. Communication, first and foremost. We have to be able to allow other people to articulate their ideas clearly and persuasively. We have to be able to understand what they are, and that is an active listening skill. We have to be able to think critically. We need to be able to listen to other people's point of view and think of it not only from what, I don't want to say our personal bias, but what every, or all the information that's out there so we can actually make an informed decision based on what is best for the community. And then the last part is leadership is paramount. When it comes to leadership, we are not here to dictate. We are not here to say you're right or you're wrong. We are here to listen and to be collaborative, to work with our constituents and with each other as we move forward.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that a lot. I have number two is a declaration of public interest. Do we have anything to discuss for the same? So you can move on to item number three, the simple comment period. Can you put this on all our agendas? So let me just kind of outline this evening. So this evening, we have three public comment periods and public hearings. If you have a comment about any of those three items, I'll ask you to save your comments until that timeframe. The comment period, the public comment period is for anyone who would like to present anything outside of those outline items. Do we have anyone who would like to present anything this time? Would you please move on to the microphone? Thank you. Could you say your name?
Paul Nelson. I'm honestly the basis one of that, we're either two decks. I'm the management partner of a big lawn care that I see. It's a fruit license, it's a license business. Notice lately, a lot of signs go up, air raiding, window washing, posted on utility poles, on some property, they've been moved. I appreciate that. We have a sign, we invited a sign placed on approximately one thousand Zalcoy Road, a private property owned by Territory Holdings Limited. David Adams, a segment, is a partner of Territory Insurance, my neighbor. I asked for permission to put a sign on his property advertising air raiding. And he said we could. After, after signing, about a week, on March twenty eighth, my son, Darkon Lloydro, seemed to check the sign and a city employee pulled up next to him in a parked vehicle and threatened to remove our sign. My son asked why and he said that nearby residents had complained. Now, I know seventy-five percent of nearby residents. A lot of them use our services, the other twenty-five percent will need air raiding. So I don't believe that neighborhood residents complained. They don't complain when we haul their trash and we spray it clean up. They don't haul, they don't complain when we mow their neighbor's yard because he's the way, certainly in the military. My son explained how they had permission from the property owner to display a sign on a private property. The employee then said that if the sign isn't longer than a week, even with permission from the property owner, he would take it with no questions, no questions asked, and then he left. The sign was legally displayed to promote our small business's license and rights. We got a similar sign sold on that site about a year ago without us, a kid, neighbor Van, a kid. Has a hundred and name, phone number. I think for a city employee to threaten to take away the license of small business signs properly, displaying incompetence of the law is less than completely inappropriate. Now, is it a big deal? Not really. Each sign costs thirty-five bucks. We use it on the area once a year. The sign goes up for twenty days, comes down. It's not year-round. Just asking for the courtesy to abide by the laws of the city and display a sign on a temporary basis on private property for a licensed business. If there's a reason the signs come down, the numbers aren't, I'd advise you to phone, give us a call. I'd rather come to the city office and look it up than end up in the dump starting to see the city sheds. Like I said, there's been a lot of signs go up lately and then they come down very quickly. Those are on city property. Those are not licensed in the long place, and I appreciate that. What I'm asking is that in the future, if a sign is properly displayed in compliance with the law, that especially if you have any proper displays, things allowed.
You have a different sign.
Thank you, Paul. It's like a new changes.
And that's good in our world?
It's a temporary sign.
Well, we have a plan on this last five months that we've been designing.
Yeah, it's, it's smaller than the federal signs at Apple Lakers, which are temporary. It's up to the finger, I think it was recently. Smaller than we're gonna say, Simon.
Thank you, Paul. I'll be in touch with you. Anyone else? Please.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bellison. I live in, well, seventy-two, very late in the pre-class. I apologize, I really don't have a public period. I'd have done better if I could sit down and written notes and notes and write today, but I didn't. I was trying to make a new call to deal. Nevertheless, the mayor and I have had many conversations about the J break signs on USA eighty-nine. The mayor has seen I died. We want to take where the signs are. U-DOT is impossible to deal with most of the time. This extension to Lloyd Road years ago, I wanted that to go through my backyard just the way it is today. But it seems that I have to fight tooth and tongue with the Attorney General's Office for the state of Utah, representing through caucus, uh, not through caucus, U-DOT. And everything that I thought was reasonable, they were against. Okay, so that's what we're done with, we've done that. But the US eighty-nine signs that were up those and taken down, that restrict J breaks, were taken down because there's a small section in a U-DOT regulation written by some U-DOT bureaucrat that says in the road sixty-five miles now or faster must not have J break restrictions. It's ridiculous to me. So I'd like to ask Fruit Heights City to support my attempt. Regardless, I'm going to write letter or letter to the governor to ask him why we can't be addressed. And Fruit Heights City has an ordinance against those J break signs. And yet, because of this little section of some U-DOT regulation, you're not going to have to put up with these J breaks at three o'clock, at five o'clock in the morning. And the other issue with that is we've spent all this money for sound walls. That sound wall, I've been here as long, longer than the sound wall that's been here. And U-DOT has sent through this last section or time that they regained eighty-nine, they raised the road level, the level of the US eighty-nine by three to four feet. And what that did was all of these truckers with straight pipes and they're illegal. They have no reason to buy some, they're illegal and saw it hit out. And this is a level area, they said you didn't pass the bridge and then it starts to go beyond. There is no reason for a J break to happen except if I'm a truck driver and I want to hear my straight pipes. And I think it's ridiculous. It's not in the best interest of us citizens that want our peace and quiet. Same as the bullet by, but there's not much we can do about things. And the rest of it takes place in the other. So that's my, I guess, point of view for the call.
No, if you have a comment, agree, we'll listen to your comments. I will be in touch with you. Okay. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I will move on to item four, which is the D.C. Council of Work. Please welcome ladies, I have to come in tonight.
All right, so our next event that we did was a leadership conference.
Ladies, you guys see this?
It's a name's on it, something. I don't know what it is. I have my goodness, my apologies. As I was saying, we just like to make a leadership conference at the USU, and that was really fun. The idea was like connecting into your roots. And so we talked about having a support system and like taking different perspectives on things that, you know, so you can have, you can just see others' perspectives and communicate with people better. Any thoughts on that?
Hmm, okay. All right, so our next activity that we're doing this month is coming up on Saturday, the nineteenth, and we're going to do the East Bay Conference, and it's going to be here, just over there, I think. And it's just for like ages to put in line, I think. This is where that was.
I know it was not, but like zero to twelve is kind of.
Zero to twelve, I think, so yeah, it's our next activity. And then the application to apply for the city council is now open.
When is that close?
The end of April.
Correct. Have you worked with Karen to get that information out and posted?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, can you make sure that you follow back up with Karen and get that out again?
Yes.
And then the East Bay Conference starts at ten o'clock, correct?
Yes.
And it's done by ten oh two, correct?
Unless the kids run faster.
So, so please come, ten o'clock. If you're literally a minute late, you've lost out. I'm not kidding.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies. Is there anything that we can do to support you as D.C. Council leaders? I think that the city has acquired and purchased all the candy for the eggs. So that's in the office for you to pick up one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, so we are going to move on to item five point one, so public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two, title two, a chapter three election and qualifications. With this, it will be a public hearing. So any comments, any, any, anything you'd like to say to city council? It's free at that time. We would ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes. And you will do that once I get in motion. Yes, would you, would you please, Eric, come forward and talk about what it's about? And then we will move on to public hearing.
So mayor of the city council, residents, in September twenty twenty-four, the staff brought to the city council the potential transition from a caucus-based election to a primary election system. Following a discussion with the city council at that time, the staff was directed to start doing research about it, do a survey, and get more information about the process. The staff, they do a survey with the community. We had a hundred and seventy-two people respond to that survey with approximately seven percent wanting a change to a primary system. The staff has presented in council meetings pros and cons for, for both systems. Based on the feedback and the research, we prepared an ordinance to possibly move to a primary system. So tonight we have the public hearing where residents have the opportunity to put together their concerns, their opinions, their, what they see with the city council. And we'll go through that process. At the end of that process, we have another public hearing. So we'll go through that, or I should say we have a comment period for recycling, and then we have another public hearing for consolidated fee schedule. But then, at the end of that, we will move into action items. And that, that's time is when the council can discuss and go through the process and vote for decide what they want to do at that time. So the public hearing is for the residents to get up and talk and voice their concerns and their opinions. We appreciate everybody being here tonight, being willing to participate.
Thank you. So as we proceed forward, we're going to do public hearing at a time. So we will, we'll start with public hearing five dot one. Then it's, then we'll open this, we'll then close it. We'll then open five dot two for recycling. We'll open that, close that, and then we'll then open the public hearing five dot three, which is the consolidated fee schedule. So if you can accommodate your time into those different buckets and, and, and please present anything you like. We would ask you to be comfortable with three minutes. Now, we don't have to be a stickler about it. We don't need to be mean and cut you off, but we would ask you to be a recycler of our own time. If something has been said, we would ask you to just reiterate that quickly and then go. Does anyone have any questions about this? This is meeting for you. Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearings. Five point one.
Okay, so a motion to carry a second from Mark to open public hearing regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two, title two, two, a chapter three election and qualifications. A motion is second. All of you ready?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we are in public hearing at seven twenty. Would anyone like to come up and present anything? Please come forward. Oh, sorry, would you say your name when you talk on the mic? Mr. Paul Cracker.
My name is Ruth Manning. I just would like to comment about the caucus system and why maybe there is some frustration with it. One of the frustrations that seems to be present is that if you're traveling, if you have other obligations, you miss out. And so I think that is one of the reasons why a lot of people would maybe move toward an election, a nomination in an election, closed election process. The other part of the caucus system that I think is relevant is that very few people seem to show up. And so the same good people are always there and the ones that are being volunteered or nominated to participate. There are so many good people in our community, so many people who could be involved. I don't know if maybe there's a possibility of the youth camps are going out and canvassing the neighborhood to make sure everyone knows what the caucus system is. Make sure everyone knows that they're not campaigning for one, one candidate or another, but that they are, that their voice is important to be heard in our city. Our, our voice is becoming smaller and smaller and smaller in our government, in our, in our nation, in our government, in our state. The only place that we really are left with a really strong voice, in my opinion, is right here in our community. And I would just ask that as a community, we do everything we can to get everyone we can involved. Because what we want to see change is going to have to start right here in the community. Thank you.
Ruth, thank you so much, Brian. Anyone else? Please come forward.
I'm Mark Van Uden. I live at drive one six six two, we're in Fruit Heights. I'm glad to speak in favor of the caucus system, all right? I'm a, all right, so I'm conserving, I'm conserving things. And, you know, so the various points, one, we've had forever, and it's served us well, you all participated in it. I mean, I see, you know, Gene Grober here was a, you know, former city council member. Two, you know, you, you talk about, last speaker talked about, hey, you know, it's, it's, you know, we want to have more people involved and everybody have a voice. Well, if you show up, you have a voice. And the benefit of this is it does not become expensive. So if you were running a primary system, you were going to canvas or wish to become a city council member or mayor, well, now you have to spend two, maybe five thousand dollars to put up flyers, canvas, et cetera. And then you have the election. And then you're going to do that all over again. Some of this stuff can be used, like signs and things like that. But the caucus system, you, you meet here informally, you, you chat with neighbors, and then some people, you know, which is all fair, I'm going to have my own show and both of me, which is fine, because that gets them out and involved in the process as well. So I, I would just like to say that if you want people, so if you want big money out of it, then have one less opportunity for big money to be, you know, spent, right? So if you're just average person, wants to get involved, think they can do a good job for roads or budget or whatever, then they don't have to have two sets of expenses for one position. We end up there. You're going to, you know, during the election, if you are, you know, on the ballot, you're going to have leaflets, signage, canvas, everything else like that. So I am, I am for the caucus system. I'm a, you know, I'm a precinct chair with the Davis County Republican Party. I'm a great fan of the caucus system, because guess what? At the caucus, you can talk to people and say, so what do you think? What's your, what you get, you may get the measure of the people and potentially you get, you get a shirt as well. And, you know, I, I think it's a phenomenal event. I came here, moved here twenty-six years ago and was like, what? Let me go check this out. Amazing. It was phenomenal, okay? So I'm not from Utah originally. I've now raised my, you know, four children and, you know, caring for my children, love this city. But I also love it that neighbors can get together to pick the people that would be on the ballot, applying for the state's first party, and then those individuals can then campaign after they talk and lead a similar with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. Anyone else? Please. Eric?
Todd Stevens. I didn't, I wanted to also talk in favor of the caucuses. I could talk about this for, if you like, the guy in Congress talks for twenty-four hours.
Twenty-seven hours. I'll come back tomorrow when we wrap up.
Yeah. I, the, as I've gone through, and I'm not, you know, not on the city council anymore or not involved, so I don't hear about things going on. So it's just come to my attention, just recently, the proposal to change the caucus, caucus system. And, but I, I want to say that the complaints I've heard about caucuses are generally aren't things that are, are an artifact of the caucuses themselves, just frustrations with elections in general. I heard one of the person complaining that, and I, I don't, I don't want any of these people, the comments I heard have been all anonymous, complaining that he could, felt like he couldn't be nominated because he's not LDS. And there's a, a vast majority of LDS people in, in the city. And I, that made me feel really badly. I've been going to the office meetings for twenty-five years. I've been a party chair for the last two cycles. And I come to those meetings and there are half the people or more that I have never met before that are part of the community. And I have no idea what their religious background or anything is. So I, I would say that they, that's not really the case. In fact, I think in a primary system, that would even be more difficult if that were true for that, for those persons. But in a, in a caucus, a person can stand up in front of the group, like Mark was saying, and be able to discuss the items and convince the people that are there that he's a good person for the office and get the nomination. You can nominate yourself, you don't have to be nominated by someone else. There's also a complaint that gives, like, someone could bring people to game the caucus, bring all their friends. And, and that's true. I ran for this public office four times in this city and I never won, while I brought my wife. But did bring anybody. And, and, you know, I managed to get, get nominated. It wasn't a fight or a battle. There's an example of, I remember one year when I was, when I was on this council, I wasn't on the ballot, but it was in the odd year and several people were on the ballot that lived right across the street in the first precinct, because I think it's the first precinct. And they were running for office and they won the election. And then we were looking, reviewing the results, the tally at the end of the, at the election. Ninety percent of the people in that precinct voted for these two guys. Talk about gaming the system, because everybody in the neighborhood came and voted. And other people in the city didn't come and vote. And I want to say it's probably forty percent of the vote came from this, this section right here. I'm sorry.
No, keep going.
It's okay. I'm trying to be quick. My, one of my favorite. My, one of my favorite comments or quotes by Thomas is by Thomas Jefferson. He says, "We in America do not have government by the majority. We have government by the majority who participate." And those that come and participate are the ones that can have a voice in in the system. Caucus meetings encourage people that may be interested in running, but don't have the nerve or to actually go out and, and say, yeah, I can do this and do it on my own. I would have never run for office if it wasn't for the caucus. And I was a council member for two terms, and I was mayor for two terms. Like was said, primaries double the cost of the election, both for the city as well as the candidates. I have to say, campaigning was the absolute most painful thing I did running for office. And I, my approach was to put flyers on every single door. I didn't do very many signs. And I don't know if that still works. That was a while ago. But it just makes me ill to think about having to do that twice. Get, put in your application, and then have to go through a primary, and then the final election. It's just, I did, I just, it makes my head almost explode. Caucus meeting, caucus meetings are much better than ensuring full slate of candidates. And it's, so anyway. My, my personal experience was that I was invited to a office meeting once by a council member. I ended up being nominated, and I thought, oh, I, I could do this. And I went through the process and, and decided I was, is, I could win the election just as good as the next guy. And I worked really hard and ended up winning the election. And, but I needed that encouragement. I needed someone to encourage me. I wasn't going to do that on my own. I needed someone to encourage me to run for mayor. I didn't want to do that on my own. But it would never have happened if, if it wasn't for the primary system. I prefer the caucus system. Sorry, nervous. I did want to say, if it's not clear, I'm very opposed to the, to the new, the ordinance that's being proposed. I wanted to mention something as I read through the ordinance. There's, and I don't know how to explain this very well, but there's got to, if, if that actually gets passed, there's got to be a way for the persons that file to run to have their name be known immediately. So that other, I'm sure other people, they're like, if so-and-so's been around, I don't think I want to run against him. Or vice versa. And so there's a little bit of strategy there that people may have as far as filing to run. And they may file at the last second or at the very good ending for some reason. I thought, after having a conversation with various people, I thought that maybe that was supposed to be, that information was supposed to be public. But in fact, it isn't. I looked at the state law, and after the filing period is closed, then the public, the third public is the list. However, that makes an unfair advantage for the council members. Because John, the mayor, you were saying that, saying that, well, if you don't have a full slate of those running, we need to go out and try to recruit candidates. But that assumes you know the people who filed or haven't filed, and you would know who they are. But if a council member is up for reelection, and they're just trying to decide whether to run or not, or the, or the mayor is up for reelection, and they're making that decision, you would have the advantage of being able to see who has filed and who hasn't, whereas someone else would not. So I think that's something that needs to be added into the ordinance to make sure that that information is immediately public. So the persons deciding whether to run or not, would have, it would be a level playing field for council members, current city council members, as well as other members of the public. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Yes, please come forward.
Okay, it's currently a winner. I have not anticipated participating, but would like to say a word or two. I have reservations about the traditional partisan caucuses. But for a city like this, when the partisan differences are, are not meaningful, I, I have found the caucus system to be effective. I have participated nearly every time, if not every time, since moving here. My one suggestion would be, if, if we were to retain the caucus system, I've been to caucus nights where, you know, I've been in a room where no one is really interested in running, and we're saying, what's so-and-so, would you be willing? And, and then we've heard that in the, in the basement room, maybe there were four people who came ready and interested in running, and then of course that goes windowing down to the two. So I don't know if there would be some way of indicating as people are coming into the rooms, like how many upon entry are, are going to express an interest in potentially running, so that, that people who want to, we can maybe spread that a little bit more.
Great. Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else? Please.
Hello? I'm from the public. My name is Blake Winslow. I live in Minneapolis, Rhode Island. I, when I was in school, I did a lot of science, so I, I feel like I have a general breast for some of the things we do. But in practice, things are much different. One of the things that, when I first moved here and was looking into our election system, really was a big question mark was, well, which of these two caucuses do I fall into? And I'd ask the question, and over the times, and the answer has always been, you like upstairs things there, since, so, um, that leads to create a little bit of confusion. Certainly not something that would torpedo a traditional caucus versus the primary system. But I think that in talking to other people within my neighborhood and people my age that may not be living in for Tayside or around the state or anywhere else in the nation, one of the big hurdles to getting involved is the, are questions for you to say. Okay, is there even a chance, certainly a chance that someone like me could run? And so the question of, you know, I'm not in this religious community. Can I, is there a chance that I could make it within this community? And I appreciate that there are responses that, well, no, of course you can, because are you willing to kind of engage? So that's kind of the, the, the thrust of what I'd like to comment about is that my appreciation for the people who've spoken, they say that, you know, we are, we are a nation that is not ruled by a majority, but the majority that are involved and show up. And appreciate that we still have those opportunities and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Anyone else? If we don't have anyone, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, twenty twenty-five dash zero two, title two A, chapter three, election qualification.
So a motion from Gary, second from Eileen. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're having to move on to either the five point two versus the public hearing regarding the recycling program. Gary, would you like to say a few things before we move on to the public hearing? So does anyone have any questions about anything that happens at work? Like, we don't need to be so face, we can, we can hide.
So I do have a question. There was, the, within the primary, as heard in the ordinance, it was not clear, are, would you run as, under a certain party? I mean, it was like, so how is it?
It's a nonpartisan race for, for.
So then how is it windowed down to however many people had applied?
So it, so with the, with the primaries, the same, we could have two people run for mayor and four people run for city council. If that's what came and did it, we wouldn't have a primary at that time, because there's four people. Now, if we had four people for mayor, two for council, and two for council for those of the positions, we would have a primary for the mayor to bring in about two candidates. And then that's what we'll primary, and then it runs down to two candidates for each opening.
But what we have with the caucus, I, I, I beg your pardon? Now, with the caucus system, it's, whichever room you end up in, with the, with the primary, how does that?
So with, with the caucus, it's the same individual. So if you're downstairs for primary, you would have the same, they would nominate three individuals to be on the ballot. One for the mayor, one for, um, or two for council.
Wait, are we not cheeky upstairs and downstairs anymore?
Well, upstairs, you would have the state rusher, the other party, and then nominate the same.
So, so if, when someone comes in though, and they say that, like, to run, do they say that I'm running?
That, that's up to the individual. But there is no direction.
No, you have to know.
So you're going.
Gene, did you hear something?
Yeah, Derek, can you speak to the issue of cost? Um, what does it cost the city to run a primary? I mean, caucus is a pretty, I, the, 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 the.
A primary, the, the cost per election, if, if the city had to do it, so.
Do you know how much it costs?
About five thousand.
About nine thousand dollars.
Yes.
Has that been allowed for in the city budget for this year?
It would be budgeted for, yes.
It's, it's a new fiscal year, starting line one.
So it would be budgeted, and it's a lot for, for if you move to that.
Thank you. Yes.
Would that then affect the city taxes or fees to accommodate for an increase in the budget?
No, no, we just put that in once, for what we're doing.
Something else would get caught.
Well, we're eventually, the tax will be raised, so.
The money has to come from somewhere.
Yeah, the money has to come somewhere, that is correct. But we are very fiscally responsible with our finances in this city. Okay.
Thank you.
So the, the next one is probably a common period. And we use it as a common public hearing, because there's no ordinance change or that to go along with this. What goes along with this is a public hearing for a consolidated fee schedule. Because there is a, a change to the fee to cover the cost of our solid waste program.
Hold on. Did everyone understand that? So we're having two public hearings tonight on the same thing. So the first one is going to only be about the recycling program. Although we're not having, we are not adopting a recycling program, what we would be adopting is the update to the consolidated fee schedule. The consolidated fee schedule encompasses a bundled recycling program. So I, I just want to make sure everyone understands, like, we're having a public hearing because we want people's comments on the recycling program, but there is no ordinance change to change that we're going to move into a recycling program. Does that make sense?
Clarify. So, so, so for clarification then, so let's say you decide not to do your recycling program, does that mean that you would then table the fee schedule vote?
Yes.
Because we have to redo it?
Yes. Yes. Sure. So, thank you.
So, once again, over the last year or two, Integrated Waste, who takes out garbage and stuff, has, has a district that has been talking about recycling. And it did start out as a mandatory program for every city that they would be required to do recycling. As a district has talked about it, they have changed. They still want recycling. There is a benefit for recycling for not building up the landfill as quick. But as we've gone through this, we went through and researched the costs for recycling, for hauling materials, for buying the garbage cans, all those different things. I've worked with Robinson Waste, who is our current hauler, and got them to guarantee a fee for the next three years if we go through the, the program. And that, that's a reason that it's a smaller increase than what would happen is because of the being able to conserve that for three years. Along with that, if, if we go through and we do this bundling program, and we purchase the cans, the purchase of the cans is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase two thousand cans. We've worked out, once again, with Integrated Waste, they have gone out and got grants to help buy the, buy the cans. And we would receive that fifteen dollars per can, which is about thirty thousand dollars on that purchase, if we go through the bundling program. The other thing that Wassatch Integrated Waste has done is gave a credit for things that are not going into the landfill. So as far as our green waste, we receive a credit for what we're diverting and not taking into the landfill. I will tell you, for the city is probably, for the side of the community is probably the highest we burn of green waste. The other thing that the board has decided that they would do the same thing with recycled materials as a city defers recycled materials. And we can receive a, a percentage back on that same cost of those things. So there's some incentives as we recycle and convert going to the landfill that is also to help we continue to keep the same cost for the next few years instead of having to increase because we're now transporting more and more garbage out to the landfill, to Willett or Skoll Valley. So this is a survey that is finished. We have a couple hundred people that took the survey. And once again, it was about seven percent of our residents that took the survey were in favor of recycling, one way or another. Tonight, once again, the councils have asked our residents to talk about their concerns about recycling, for, against, all those kind of things. And as they go through this, that can help them look to the next public hearing about doing a fee schedule.
So if, if you were to adopt, if you schedule a recycling, is it mandatory thing? Do I have to, or is it, I can opt in or opt out? And I might not have to pay the fee if I don't want to do it?
So the fee will be a longer program, and so the fee will be the twenty dollars and fifty cents, I believe is what it is. And that would take care of your recycling and one regular garbage can at that time.
So I would have to do it?
If, if you did not want the recycling can, you can, you can come and pick it up as a city, but you'd still, you'd still get set the twenty dollar fifty cent fee on the basis.
Okay, so this is an all or nothing agreement? So unlike the cash recycling program, if people had a choice, this would be all or none?
Yes. Alright. So, thank you. So we are going to now move, I would entertain a motion to move into public hearing.
Motion to move into public hearing for recycling. For public comment.
Okay, so I have a motion from Gary, the second from Mark. All in favor of moving into public hearing? Say aye.
Public comment.
Public comment. All in favor of moving into public comment? Say aye. Any opposed? Moving into public comment at twenty-eight. So, it's now your turn. Like, we would love to hear feedback from you. I, please, come, come forward. I will actually introduce Nathan Rich. He's actually the executive director of Wassatch and Green Waste. He's here. I think it would be fair if you have questions, we can kind of open up and have a little dialogue. I'd just encourage them to be in just so face and, and as we're supposed to. So, please, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Mark Van Uden. I live on that one six six two Warren Road, you know, here in Crete Heights, twenty, twenty-seven. So, it's a lot against mandatory anything, okay? That ultimately, it's another twenty bucks and another key, right? That I would have to pay for, so I don't know about that. We, we, you know, I already recycle aluminum. So I, my, so you can, we can take one quarter down to a metal place, you know, and then get twenty bucks for it, right? And so, from my perspective, you can recycle yourself if you choose to do so. Why should you inflict this upon me and, and get another twenty dollars out of it, right? If you want to. Go ahead.
Can I just ask a clarification? You said it's additional twenty dollars. What is the difference from the one can to the?
To the recycling, it'd be a five dollar increase to the money.
Well, sorry, we had two cans and a green can. So we'd be another twenty dollars and another five bucks.
No, it's, it's an additional.
An additional five dollars for, for the recycling cans.
Which I don't want. So I would sit there, throw it away, burn it, destroy it on the fourth of July or whatever. I actually wouldn't do that. But I'm still paying extra five bucks for the good cost, right? You know, so I was at a meeting last time you presented, you know, I, I made a public comment, I was commenting, I don't know why, I don't know my comment, which, which she said, oh, well, it's an illusion anyway, because most of that stuff ends up in the landfill at some point. You know, the, the. You know, the the uh, the last time I was here was several months, several months ago, when we had talked about, maybe it was last year. We see it all blend together. The the, because certainly California used to ship all the stuff to China, and China no longer does that. So, you know, the illusion that you're doing something good for the environment, you know, could be an illusion. I mean, I don't know. That is certainly was said here last time ago, you said that now you can successfully recycle more options, right?
I never said recycling was an illusion, just to be clear.
Okay, well, so me taking aluminum cans to a metal shop.
Thank you for that.
Is absolutely not an illusion, right?
Absolutely.
And and, you know, cardboard, all those stuff, it's not soil, it's not this, you know, we want to recycle glass. Glass is maybe not the same. We have lots of same. Quite frankly, an option that you aren't looking at is work with the camera and with the new administration, get the burn lab back online. They'll say yes. And then our black stuff went to the burn lab. I don't know if we can still do that, still give it all or build it up. Anyway, I I don't think it's fair, if you were to put an extra five dollars on me for something that I do not want, and I just like to recycle anyway.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
I'm really back here, a couple of questions. So we have used for better part of twenty years a private vendor, I guess, to to collect our recyclables and have been very happy with that service. My understanding from what you've said is they would not have an opportunity to bid to get this contract. It sounds like it's already been renegotiated with with Robinson Waste, is that?
So the city, the city staff has already gone out through the bidding process and have already bid this out through other vendors. Robinson has come back, because we had to bid out our black can hauling this year. And as part of our, we didn't, we didn't ask about the black can, we sold our contract with Robinson Waste to all for another two years. So we we did do that, so we then added recycling to it for that portion and for us.
So so you did get other bids, but they came in and you did not get?
No, we stayed with the same haul.
Uh huh, okay, yeah. So one of my concerns, I guess, would be that that many of us have have been pleased with the service we've been getting and it does seem unfortunate they would not have an opportunity to to bid. Although I can see that it would make sense to have the people getting rid of the waste, also picking up the recycling. And just in response to some of Mark's concerns, am I understanding correctly that the Integrated Waste Facility is is fully up to the extent that perhaps if we don't make a move like mandatory recycling, at some point, using that facility will no longer be an option and then presumably we would have to at that point pay more trash haul elsewhere? So it so it sounds like if if we don't do it now, then do we have any sense of how much we would pay incrementally later? If we were to kind of postpone the the bidding, as it were?
Yeah. Rich, shall I answer?
Yeah. Would you like me to come on?
Well, as long as you don't talk for.
You know me, I don't.
Okay, that's why I said it.
I'll tell you, I'm happy to be here and happy to be a third one. Nathan Rich, I'm the executive director of WASC Integrated Waste. Two questions I heard, one is about your current service provider, handling the recyclables. That that vendor does a great job, it's Mountain West Recycling. They're now owned by Ace Wasted Recycling, which is the largest independent hauler in South Carolina. They do a great job. We've actually negotiated with Ace because they have that subscription program in in really all the north Davis cities that didn't have formal city recycling programs and including Morgan County and Morgan City, which are also rolling out now bundled recycling programs. Ace is also a large hauler in the municipal industry. So so we had a conversation with Ace and we said, look, we, the reason that the city benefits by having one vendor is you've got one garbage truck running up and down the streets. You don't want two garbage trucks running the same route, and they're going to be more efficient because they're closer between stops. So so the city benefits by having one vendor. I will tell you that that your vendor has given you some really great pricing on the on the recycling program, has exceeded our expectations, an additional five dollars, including the cost of the can is is really a pretty good deal. So so Ace, because they haul some other cities which are rolling out recycling programs, is full support of the program, they'll actually pick carts up from Morgan and Fruit Heights and they're rolling into Sunset, who's rolling out an opt out program or a bundle program. So those carts will be reused in some other cities through Ace, so so they're also as a hauler, not opposed to the program because they'll be putting additional cans on the ground in some other areas too. So 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 we, I think, addressed some of that issue of of full respect for the job that Ace does in the district. Second question, we were talking about.
The cost.
Cost, yeah, so.
Oh, okay, so so the, it is true, and and what's interesting is I came to the district twenty six years ago and when I came to the district and Mayor Stevenson served on our board, we had about twenty years left in the landfill. And at that point in time, we were operating the waste energy facility, thank you very much for recognizing that facility, and it served us well for thirty years. For a number of years, we redesigned and reengineered that landfill and expanded it and expanded it, and we're pretty much done. I do not have another rack that I can pull out of my hat in terms of expanding the size of that facility. What we are doing is planning for a reasonable transition to the future. When that landfill closes, we will continue to maintain the residential drop off services that we provide at the landfill for the foreseeable future. The green waste recycling programs, they come up and use our our concrete pad as a residence, so you can come in and out of that, get a flat tire. The recycling opportunities, all of those will be provided at that facility. The landfill itself will be replaced with a second transfer station to handle that waste. We already have a first transfer station operating where the waste energy facility was. We're actually trans transferring to a landfill a hundred miles from here, about a third of the waste that comes to us. And we're doing that intentionally now because we want the life of that landfill to last about fifteen to eighteen years because we get a lot of operational flexibility by having that landfill open. On days when it snows and our trucks can't run, we have a place to go. So so what we're 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 planning for an orderly transition, but make no mistake, the future is at some point that landfill will be closed and all of our waste will be transferred. What's important and what we're pushing is the more material that we don't call waste, that we divert, and that includes you guys have a great green waste program, right? About sixteen percent of the waste that's generated at Fruit Heights gets diverted through your green waste can. So another fifteen to twenty percent of that can be diverted through a blue can. You can actually generate about thirty percent less waste, which is not just waste going into this landfill, it's any waste going into a future landfill that we don't have to pay to haul a hundred miles and put into a landfill somewhere else. And and that material that we're recycling is chock full of renewable and non-renewable recyclables that are being recycled, that we are selling to markets that are not in China. Nobody is dumping our recyclables into an ocean, which is, everyone likes to say. It is true, China did, with China sort of closed the door on recyclables for the last seven years, nothing's gone to China, which is which has forced us to develop domestic markets for a lot of that recyclable material. So big fire, cardboard, plastics number one, plastics number two, aluminum, steel are all being recyclable. Now, if you put something that's not recyclable in that garbage can, it's going to end up in the landfill because we take, we have to sort it out and maybe clean it up, but we have our. It's about taking too long, but is there any other questions?
Is there any other questions, yes?
I have to just comment. I would, I have some stuff I want to say that everybody already said, but I just want to brag that Fruit Heights was the first city to do green waste in the can.
Sure.
Yes, there's a quick follow up question, so at some point, to haul the trash an additional, you know, a hundred miles or whatever, will there be an incremental cost associated with that? And so if we were to do this now, then we could.
Yeah, it could just push that back a little bit and 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 also allows us to instead being a big step functioning cost, we're we're bringing some of that cost forward, but also that pushes some of that cost back and and allows us the bigger operational flexibility. Just one comment in terms of, um, the district will provide the the diversion incentive. If the city rolls out a program, it's either one, which the 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 city is proposing to do, or an opt out program, but it's a limited opt out period. And what's important is, and the reason why, the more people participate, the lower the unit cost is. So your hauler, if if your participation rate drops lower, your unit cost goes higher. So that's the first reason. And the second reason is if we really want to make a difference with how much waste the entire community diverts, then everyone has to play. And so your overall diversion numbers will be better with with a stronger program. And I completely understand the the pushback on on the mandatory thing, but I think it's one of those things that we, that perhaps we look at, we think the benefits to communities at large.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, please.
Once again, laundry company go to the landfill, two or three times, leave the grass, green waste, and it's amazing the number of trucks that are hauling garbage and out of there and how it hasn't just exploded. My point is, the last couple of years, my city bill has gone a hundred and six, a hundred and twenty nine dollars a month. That's okay, hopefully my way to step up that. I consider about eighty, seventy five year olds fixed income who don't have ads on their door a day. They have no cardboard versus the millennials who have ads on top about three times a day, and it's, they'll fill their can in two days. Is there some consideration for the elderly, whoever's on the city or the county tax record owning that home? If they're above age X, is there some consideration for them where they get a discount or a reduced rate for this mandatory program? I think we start learning that that they just don't, they just don't have waste, maybe twice a day. They just don't have the waste that normal family generates. So is there some consideration for those who are on fixed income, like we got a thing of doing that?
Thank you, Paul. I will, I will say that we will roll out, if this is approved, mandatory public program, but if there were some that need some some help, a public hearing, we've talked to.
Could we make a lie from that, please?
We have talked to the the district and and the city of of a couple exceptions. We'll we'll see, and you know, face by face basis, but we have to roll out a public program in order to get the credit, a fifty dollar credit for the can back. But yes, it's too. Any other questions, yes, please, go ahead. It's hot in here.
No.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, three years I've been here, it's quite hot.
My name is Mike Perez, I've lived in this community for a long time. I built a house here in nineteen eighty, over there in eighty, so it's it's a while back. My concern is, if we're going to recycle, and I appreciate the comments from you about how it works, do you separate a separate can for cardboard, separate can for glass, grass clippings, so and so forth, or glass?
So so brass goes in the green can, we don't want to miss grass with cardboard because it contaminates. Everything else, we call it a co-legal recycling bin, and everything goes in one bin. And then we have, in our material recovery facility, we sort it back out. So so all of the clean dry recyclables go into one bin. Glass unfortunately is not something that we put in the bin because it breaks and it causes a health and safety issue. But we do accept glass at the landfill, if that is something you do want to recycle. It is not a high value recyclable material, unlike your aluminum and and currently HDPE, number, your 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 natural milk jug, number one HDPE, is worth more than aluminum. But it's a market, and markets are crazy, and but just to give you an idea, there is some value in some of the plastics.
I feel all of us are trying to be good citizens, and we like the idea of recycling, but it's confusing.
It is.
Is there any way that you could send out some education, you know? You know, the flag, when you know cardboard, put it there, this is something.
May I? Go for it. So one of the, one of the district's responsibilities in this program is we will be providing educational materials. So if if the city moves forward, there will be a postcard that gets mailed to every resident that that notifying you that the cart's coming, giving you a landing page on our website. When the cart's delivered, it will come with a package, a packet with some frequently asked questions. There will also be a sticker on that, which explains what materials can should go into the can and how to do that. We have a website that has a lot of information on it. We also give tour, tours of the facility to any size group, so we're happy to give tours for people who are interested to do that.
Where is it?
It's it's located where the waste energy facility used to be, so right adjacent to Hill Air Force Base. So yeah, we we would love, it's really important when we roll a program out that we get the education out so that the material is as recycled, number one, it's as recyclable as possible, and number two, that we get everything that's recyclable into the bin. Because we know that seventy five, eighty percent of recyclables are lost at the household level because we're we're now relying on residents to to make that separation and deciding what to put in the recycling can. And it's not, it's not self evident what goes in there, so I really do appreciate that.
And then the last thing is, I'm not a spring chicken, so I appreciate all these comments about not beating up the old guys. So if there is some way to give like a age related discount, I know for the program to be successful, you got to specify this, and everybody has to pay to make it make it work. But if there was consideration for those of us who are retired, who've done that kind of stuff, then we welcome you to mine. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ted?
He was stretching.
Yes.
G D Grover, um, people way. So I appreciate all that you have shared this tonight. I have been so fortunate to have to take that tour at that facility, and everybody should do that, it's absolutely amazing and fun to watch, actually, really fun to watch, fascinating. And I can understand from one perspective, not wanting to be forced to recycle from like, you know, historically speaking, maybe like socially, we have that from ideological perspective of like, in theater, like, you gotta recycle, you gotta recycle. And good ideas have undertaken consequences, you know, switch from paper to plastic bags to save the trees, did a different thing, you know, with a plastic bag garbage can, you know, like, well, why do we do that? So like, I can see where like there's a resistance to being pushed into something that's that feels ideological somehow, but um the perspective that you've offered here tonight is very practical. Like, this is about our community and our landfill, like, it's only so big, and it's going to fill up, and like, how do you extend the life of that? Because it costs more to haul it, it costs more and more a year, you know, and more fuel goes out. more fuel goes out and every cost goes up to haul it up another hundred miles away. Like, is that what we want to go with this, just to say like, I wanna do it my way? But like, I, I feel like there's a very important component, cost wise and community wise and future plan wise, that you've brought tonight, um, that like, most of it, we don't see that or think of on a daily basis, you know, we throw something away. And it is kind of hard to change habits, you know, and like get used to recycling stuff and get used to what goes in and what doesn't or whatever. But it feels good to know that it is not, um, an illusion that stuff is going to last to check in this, I don't know if this is still correct, but like, there's a cement plant or something, whether burning or plastics to keep their fire hot enough to do the cement and stuff, or mattresses that can get recycled somehow, and, um, uh, I don't know what the market's are, but like, it is going places and actually getting recycled. And some of it's right here local, and I don't know all the details of all the rest, but like, I love knowing that. I love like doing that, you know, taking the trouble to sort it out, and it's amazing to me how, what percentage of my garbage goes in the blue cans, like, it really is quite amazing how that, that they go that, it only gets all the two weeks, but it's all over two weeks for sure. And, um, and just, and, and I know that it's actually going to be recycled and extend the life of our facility. And I think that our whole class, um, lots of our great businesses is just doing fantastic job, I think, for our community, so thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So I will say that Mike, this case comes from living in Germany in the nineties for three years in the military and having to discuss things, why I watch, you know, the biodegradable waste, the paper, the cardboard, the green grass, the lime grass, white grass, glass, and then everything else. Do you have a man to do all that stuff? And every one of those stupid cans was a B trip, right? It was every single month, right? So, uh, you know, I realize that, uh, you know, here in America, we can be better at this, but that's honestly where Mike this case comes from is that miserable experience in Germany.
Great. Good, hand it back. Ted? You next. Strike your raise.
Debbie Topkins, everyone built this in Detroit. Um, I'm speaking in favor of recycling. Um, I've recycled for a long time, and when we first, we just built a home here, I'm a native Food Heights person, but we just built our home twelve years ago. And at the time, I don't remember what the cost was, but the virtual one felt too expensive to me, so I didn't sign up. And, uh, so I've been trying to go all over the county, using all the free stuff, and I was thrilled to see those back at the landfill because they were there, they was gone, and anyway. Um, I used to have the opinion that you should insist on recycling also, but when we look at the current circumstances that we're in with the landfill filling up, um, this is a community problem, and I think that it's not invisible, particularly because it's five extra dollars a month. I think that that's money well spent. I'm willing to spend it, and I don't really like paying taxes either, but we have to have services right, so sometimes we have to fees for things to have the quality of life that we need. And so, who knows? I, I'm all for recycling.
Thanks, Eddie. Ted, go on down here.
Was it now?
Yes.
Mike, I think I've got the babies. I moved into this place in the nineties, nineteen seventy-six. And, and all of that, and the great people from the John Woo front, uh, it has continued all these years, and it, it was, I don't have to come to these meetings because you look out for our neighbors, and I appreciate that. Um, I'm starting, I'm in a terrible situation of a dispute with these people. And who's that?
Who is that?
Ace.
Ace, Ace. Um, and there was part of my vision coming into knocking, um, I'm telling alls out here. Uh, I, I met the base long time ago, and the number, that telephone number that they said they have many is five, four, four, three, two, six, seven, I have not had that line running for some, I've had fifteen years. So they couldn't get a hold of me. I've called this twice in the last two weeks to have Patton return a call to me, and no call has come. And I called her today, I, I, the call started out like this, hi, is Patton there? What do you want to talk to her? And they said, well, yeah, as a matter of fact, I'd like to talk to her. Did I tell her to stop? I'm really, I'm really, I'm sorry, I really thought that was a poor question to ask. Um, to go back, she's already done two notices to return a call to me. Uh, Patton's busy right now, could I take the message? And so what we need to discuss is when I started with Ace, I would get a guess that it was about six dollars and eighty cents a month. It is now nine dollars and sixty seven cents as of December. And when they, when they raised that rate, they didn't even tell me because they already have my account number. And the only reason that I recognized there was a problem was I've got a cheap sheet at home, and it's eight by ten, or eight and eleven and a half, and I filled up just about the whole front page of my expenses, and I have to do this to keep track of my bills. And you're probably all in insane about it, I don't know. At any rate, some people have access to my checking account and automatically get in there, and I had an agreement with them, I was just doing the email thing with the draw. Ace fifty size to go up to nine dollars and sixty seven cents with no communication to me, not, not telling me or anything, I just noticed, oh, things have gone up a little bit. So, um, I've got a full can of garbage that was out last Wednesday. Uh, they didn't know, because I'm black ball, I guess, or maybe. Um, I was standing here today really hopeful that you're gonna tell me you're gonna provide me recycled service for the five dollars a month. I'm all for it, but that's ten times better than, or I'm currently, yeah, and I don't know how to get rid of my blue can or, or the garbage that's in there, because there's no money from Ace for calling back.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else? Please.
Mike, just a general question, and that's about the fee schedule. So you.
Sorry, you got to set.
So I, I agree, correct? Like those of me, uh, with the fees, the five dollars that would be an increase, uh, that's an agreement for three years, correct? So that, that fee is five dollars, what about the black cans for the next two years? They agree on that ultimately as well? So this would be an increase, and then at the end of that time, there would be probably a further increase as well? But just my only question.
Thanks, Mike.
Go ahead, please.
Has there been any consideration for a fee per can pickup? Well, since my point is, everybody got a recycling bag later, and people were taking full cardboard boxes and putting them into the proper collection can, and just filling it up with air and a little bit of cardboard, so they could say to their neighbors, look, you know, you've been doing this and I've done five cans full. Then well, somebody else collapses the cardboard, puts it in the can, and only has to have it picked up in one seventy-five weeks, because it's full of cardboard, not air. Has there been any consideration to the cost per can going into the collection?
So. I can take this one.
So working with the hauler, um, majority of haulers and recyclers is everywhere, you can't recycle a can. I, I've talked a lot with Robinson Waste, and I've looked at that process of, is that enough? Um, because I've seen, I've actually seen people regret it, but pretty recycling cans. Um, so they, I don't know, majority of the time, yes, most people, every other week, it is enough to pick up and recycle. And so they base their cost on how many times they're coming into the city, um, and as they come in and you pick up more cans, the, the cost is going to be smaller. And that's the way to do the, the process of putting your price together for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Right hand back? Please.
We need a lot of.
Oh, how are you?
My attention, I wasn't planning to, but, and I get really nervous, but I live at seven fifty-eight away, um, and I just, I'm a hundred percent for recycling. Five dollars a month, I can throw that out on something so tiny, and I think it's completely worth it. Like, what would you do for your future generation that you would give five dollars a month? What would you do for your children and your grandchildren? You would give five dollars a day to make it even better for them? Like, we have so much waste in like our, our society right now, they watch Amazon a hundred times a day and deliver, all the boxes are just going into the garbage, you know, and you're someone who's famous for soda drinking, um, a lot of waste that I see in this country, and I think it's not always about us. We have to think about the future, our children, and other people. And I would be someone who would gladly just go and pay my neighbors five dollars a month if it was too hard for them, and so, so I'm absolutely for it.
Thanks, Eddie. Any other comments? Please.
Tyler, Danny, Limon, and Mountain World, what do you want to do? And I'll challenge anybody who has moved in before me.
I'm older than you. I was here before you were.
Darren, you've been here before?
He was, he's, he's been a couple of years over the weekend.
And it's early late ten.
There you go. Anyway, um, just some questions. So the recycling will be picked up twice or every other week?
Every other week.
Okay. Um, I have some millennials in my basement who generate more recycling than would take in a can, whichever the option, key cans, or how, how would we handle that? Right now, we fill up the back of our truck and go up to the facility and do it there. And so I'm grateful to have that facility that you can go with.
So there really, there is the option to get a second can at five dollars per, per fee?
Are you sure? What if we called the cans and not tores?
Tors can. I don't let people call them tores.
I'm sorry, I'm just joking, I'm joking.
That's what previous mean.
Yeah, I was saying tores, and I was like, I'm lost.
Tores like, just could be random names.
Okay.
We will not call them tores in this room. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Oh, yes, Jenny.
I just want to add, I just want to add, there's trucks.
Yes, yes, there's multiple trucks. And just, I don't think they can hit on this, but the, the landfill is not charging the ci, there's value in recycled material. So they, the, the landfill is not charging the city for recycled materials. Um, we're only paying for transportation costs on the can. So once it gets up there, it's on the landfills who pull out the material and to, and to use that. So we're not being, we're not charging for, we're not being charged for our recycled materials. Does that make sense? Correct. Any other questions? Okay. I would entertain a motion to move out of public comment.
I made a motion to move out of public comment.
Thank you, Mike. Second, Sean. All favor of the out of the comment period, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight twenty-four, eight twenty-five? I have number five point three, public hearing regarding resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four adopting a updated consolidated fee schedule. Darren? You gotta be a little bit quicker than that. It's hot in there.
It is hot, and it's down, the answer would turn on.
No, you try talking up with that, or, nevermind. It's your hot chocolate.
So, uh, consolidated fee schedule, which is, hey, it's brought up now, it feels pro down, okay? Uh, the city's responsible to consider, uh, to keep an updated consolidated fee schedule as we go throughout the year. We do meet and we do go through the fees a couple of times a year. Along with the change for, um, consolidated or for the garbage collection, we also looked at, uh, fees for violation for rentals and those other things where individuals aren't following the ordinance and those kind of things. So we have something that we could go back and say, here's your ordinance. So those fees were also added to the consolidated fee schedule, and then if you go down to the garbage. So the increase on the, on garbage, um, not only on the first can with a, on the program of recycling, was a five dollar increase, um, which brings that to twenty dollars and fifty cents. Um, along with that, um, the cost for the second garbage can is going up for homes for regular garbage waste, um, and there's a two dollar increase on, on that second can now, um, for disposing of that waste.
On the second?
On the second black can, not on the first. The first is, is just the increase for the monthly, the second can is the increase for having two garbage cans. And then also along with that is if anybody wanted a second recycling can, it would be a five dollar charge for that second recycling can, or a third or a fourth, so for each one of those. And those would be a tease on, uh, consolidated fee schedule, and continued with that.
One thing we had talked about with that, the engineering part, there are these sort of water fees based on home size.
Yes, so I hope everybody on this, are doing the study, we're doing the transportation study first, um, we just got the information back for that, uh, well, and we're putting it together as we go through that process, uh, when we're finished with that, we'll move to the start of it.
So hang on, we have a question.
Great. So thank you, Darren. Um, I would entertain a motion to move in the public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four adopting updated consolidated fee schedule.
So.
Eileen?
Second.
Second from Gary. All favor of moving into a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four adopting updated consolidated fee schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in public hearing at eight twenty-eight. We're staring at you guys. Any comments? I still not see any comments. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Sean?
Second.
Second from Mark. All favor of moving out of public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, I have number five point four is to review the business, we outsource, outsource IT provider, this is something that's on a previous agenda, uh, in your packets, you have all the information. This is just a time to ask Darren questions about anything that you have, about information.
So the last council meeting, when I got this to the city council, I was missing the page for, um, one of the IT companies that we were recommending, um, I have now got that in packets, so each of you could see the, the different costs on, on things.
Darren, um, I, I'm struggling to understand the different services that each provider is offering to us. Um, maybe you can address that just a little bit?
So our IT, uh, companies, they provide, um, our software licensing for, um, Microsoft and those individual things. They also do our cloud storage, our secondary. They also do our cloud storage, our secondary storage, um, that's required by the state for our buildings. They come in, if we have problems with our computer system, they, they come in and work on those. And make sure we're staying updated on the different programs that we're using. Uh, they also make sure, um, our hardware is keeping our firewalls up to date and, and those kind of things as they go through and, and go through that process.
So, so what I'm saying, it's hard to understand, are they all providing, I assume they're all within the judiciary, are providing some minimum amount of service that is equal to each other?
Yes.
And then are any of them providing services in addition to that?
So they're, they're all providing, um, when I put that together, send it out from, um, I use what we're currently using.
So you put it together and run it?
Yes, and put that out and had different companies come in and give you this. I had Computec that we currently use, um, and then I have Wasatch, uh, that came in and gave us this and then Initiative IT. Intuitive IT, sorry. And it all came in and they all went through it, um, we met with each one of them, um, and went through the process. Computec, um, is lower until we add some of the security fees that we need to update to, which adds a, a big amount to the, the monthly charge. So they, they're all the, all the companies are really pretty close together on their pricing.
How much is an additional increase? Cause obviously that we already have their services. They're at twenty-two fifty, but about, what's the additional increased cost?
It'll be another two hundred and forty-three dollars, um, for an updated, uh, I want to say, stop your rant somewhere, stop your, um, all the security issues.
Which company are you trying to target?
After going through this, um, Initiative IT, Intuitive IT. Is the one that, um, came back with the, I want to say a very good presentation. What they would do, um, they would actually go through all our system right now and make sure we're updated on all our firewall, all the security is included in that price of coming and putting that all together.
So you feel that comparing Wasatch to Intuitive, um, Computec, obviously, um, we have been happy with their service, is that correct? Um, Wasatch has three different prices, three different levels of service, okay? Um, Intuitive has a one-time fee of almost twenty thousand dollars initial, plus a twenty-three eighty-six a month, which is in line with what you're talking about. But in there, they're also talking about an additional seven hundred dollars a month, additional fee? Is that something that we are?
So they, they would actually take, if we went with a three-year contract with Intuitive, they would take that twenty thousand dollars and they would just say, this is what we're coming to do to make sure your system is up to date. You have all the security you're needing, all the requirements that you put out, and go through the whole system and bring it where it's proper and all.
To be clear, they would remove the twenty thousand dollar fee?
Yes, the twenty thousand dollar fee, and it would just be a monthly fee for that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, we're now going to move on to either six-one-one, which is approved and denied ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two to a chapter three elections and qualifications. I will open that up for any comments or any motion.
I have a couple of comments. Some of the things that this sets up caucus meetings, I don't know that we have given those cities a fair shot with caucus, they love and hire different things. But there's truly only two cities in the, in the state that do caucus meeting. It would seem to me that we would have a voice on the hill to make this something that would be more equitable for our community. And so to, to, to attack that and say, it doesn't work because of this, um, isn't concerning. I think we discussed that option. And then the other option that I thought of and can actually be brought to mind as well, of, of perhaps having, uh, everyone together, uh, to, to make nominations, so they can eliminate, um, people and everywhere. Perhaps there was another room without, and again, if that's something that needs a change, you say, well, I don't think we would address that often. And so I feel like, I feel like we have not adequately addressed all of the options that are.
Okay, and, and please, here, directly, that I, I was for the caucus all the way up until two months ago, when, when this can got.
I don't think that, I just, what I'm concerned.
I know, but what I was saying is, um, as we have been running it with the caucus system, we're allowing fifty-six people on average to determine who would be on the, on the, on the ballot, on the, on the election ballot. Why would we not allow, on average, according to Brian McKinsey, who oversees our, the, the election of the county, why would we not allow eight hundred and eighty on average to determine who would be on the, on the election ballot?
I believe we are allowing them.
But we're, we're only allowing the voice and the vote of about fifty to sixty every two years.
We're not, we're not, we're not disqualifying anybody. Anybody can come to caucus meeting, it's their choice. So to, to state that we're not allowing them is a misrepresentation of what.
Okay, but it has to be here, it has to be here.
But and that's some of the things that I think would be in our previous iteration that we have. That's not things that they say, but truly taken that away. Because you didn't have to be, so your neighbor could not be, even if you were not here, uh, uh, either way, the caucus was set from your neighbors. And that's why I'm saying, I think that's not happening to, to address the state and say, hey, this is a problem. Because what if we have someone who happens to be out of town? The other thing that we have, I think, sometimes in the past is this idea of, this feeling that this room is always so big. And, and the, um, one option would be to consider going to school. And again, having a larger group to, and nominating from within that larger group. And, and just filling the seats out. Again, I just, I don't know if we have addressed all of the things that have made our caucuses work so well for our city for so many years. And we say, right now, people are willing to run. It comes to kind of, it, it, it weighs, um, depending on people's thoughts about the city and different things. But there have been many, many elections where there has been a total need to draft people. And in fact, there have been people who have been drafted that are not at the caucus meetings in, in the past. But it has, it has been a situation where, um, I think someone is still likely to show running. And, and that's why I'm saying, I don't know that we have truly addressed some of the drawbacks that you have for you to have, um, at the hill. And, you know, it seems to me we should have a voice. And whether it's working with our senator or our representative, we should have a voice.
My thoughts are, we started this process in September. We asked the city staff to put together a survey, do research, gather information.
On certain points.
Right, I think you should have brought those points up.
But I have. But I have.
How do you know they have a figure out?
Because we didn't address them in the survey, not at all.
Well, I, I don't, I don't run down that path with you. But in this special election that we had, we had, it was twelve or fourteen, maybe twelve, people that stepped up and wanted to do it. That is more than we had the last.
I think that is a variable because there were some very hot topics towards the end of last year. And people didn't like the way the, from the top down, meaning the, 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 um, the White House down. There was a lot of stuff going on that people didn't like as a whole. Um, and so there were a lot of people more vested at the time to step up for that. And, and I mean, yes, I'm sitting here, somebody who also put my name in for and got, you know, appointed. But I don't think that that is a direct reflection of how many people will step up or continue to participate. Because you were looking at, what was it, whatever the fee was, and then you were only looking at eleven months of service. When you are truly doing a four-year term and giving that time and energy, it's a totally different ballgame. And so I, I'm not saying that people aren't still interested and want to, um, have a positive effect. And I hope that everybody's still politically charged and wants to help do that. But to say that twelve people showed up, I think that's kind of a misrepresentation of how many might actually show up this time.
Well, true, but when I talk to ten out of twelve, not that they brought any major issues. They brought issues they wanted to get involved in the community. So, you know, as that.
Well, there's a lot of people that want to get involved and there's the people that actually do it. And that's the problem with people in the communities, that they step up for a short period of time. But we live in America, we have running water, we have, we're so busy that people kind of forget, they get complacent. And so I just, and I'm not trying to bring up squad, I'm just to say that we're gonna have this big group of people show up, I, I kind of disagree with that.
Well, and the main thing of their universe is everybody ran, had to pay twenty-five dollars, not free housing to run. And everybody who ran got five minutes, five hundred to vote for them, not five hundred.
So I've got two things, um, we can talk factual, just for a couple of seconds. Um, and this is from Lieutenant Governor's office, the information they provided, and Davis County Elections Office, Brian McKinsey. The benefits that we get from a Helena caucus is, is cost. It's true, we can, we can fill a ballot for free. The other benefit, uh, from Brian McKinsey was that we can get everyone together into a room and discuss topics. He said after that, very quickly, he said, you can do the same thing with a meet the candidates night and ask the question and get to know the candidates, because those are the two benefits you get from a caucus. The two benefits that you get from a primary election is that you get equal representation. He's just telling me factual. You get equal representation from the community. With a caucus, you normally get pockets of candidates. And I, I, truthfully, I, I, I could see that, it's happened in the past, where we get groups of, of individuals. The other benefit from a, from a primary is that you get the voice, whether they're here on one single night or not. You get the voice, our city, who would give up eight hundred and eighty, uh, to nine hundred and twelve, using his numbers, who would cast a ballot for the primary election. As compared to the sixty that we're getting out to this, to our caucus meetings. The, the, uh, that's the primary, and then the final, um, the, the, um, the general election would be about twelve hundred to sixteen hundred votes that would be cast. Looking back at all of our past campaigns, like, they actually won that, like, for the versus getting. So, um, and the question that I would keep on, I would like to get, I would like to get answered, but I haven't necessarily heard yet, is why would we not allow a primary election where you get the voice of more people who can cast a ballot, instead of being at a certain location on a certain given day and time, allow the voice of eight hundred people to determine the future of the city, as compared to the voice of a small minority of, on average, sixty people?
May I rephrase?
Oh, one more thing, sorry. As our caucus system stands right now, we are the only municipality in the state of Utah that's running a partisan election process for municipal seats. We, we created this as a non-partisan solution to keep partisan politics out of our city. But we're actually the only one who's running a partisan election process.
So by law, we're currently running a partisan?
We are, by law. And we cannot stop anyone else from coming in and creating whatever party they want. And there would, by law, they would have to allow a contact.
So that is one thing that we said we could do, right? Is just do it in for people.
Uh, may I talk to you about, um, the primaries? So, um, this is me playing devil's advocate, looking at both sides. With the primary, anyone can put their name in, so there's more cost, um, to those individuals, okay? They're gonna have more skin in the game because they have to pay, I don't say pay through the nose, they have to, um, come up with more money initially, correct? That could hinder a lot of people that may not have, uh, a disposable income. Where you could have some people that are very wealthy, that could essentially, I want to say by the election, um, by name recognition alone, they could just make it to the, to the final. So what could we do as a city to, um, cause if people are just putting their names on the ballot, we don't know who they are. Or, I mean, do we have a meet the candidates night? Do we have a Q and A with them? That's the one of the benefits of the caucus, is that you actually get to talk and inter, you know, interview the people that night, so you know who they are. Yes, there's a smaller pool of people, but, um, you can see what I'm getting at when it comes to the primary. Like, how do we, how do we fix that?
I would, I would strongly recommend that if we went to do the primary process, we turned our city into a primary election, that we would hold multiple meet the candidates nights on both the primary and the general election. A valuable to get together and, and ask the questions like we were doing for the, the caucus.
So the, the other question that so many people have had with our meet candidates nights versus the total number of people who have kind of a caucus and got the crazy one who still have that in more, many more people.
But you still have to vote. Statistically, the vote will still be over eight hundred people who pass a ballot for a primary election. As compared to the sixty who are here in a caucus. And I'm just, I'm presenting information, like, I, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, I, I don't care whatever direction you go.
My concern personally is that, um, yeah, I don't think you get more people that are truly vested into the primary, like, that actually know the facts and those type of things. Mr. Stevens, you made up a good point. The people that are here and that are, you know, invested, I can remember the exact quote you said, you quoted somebody. It kind of struck a nerve with me, I'm not gonna lie. Because the people that want to be here and want to do it, they will make time for those things. I mean, if there is a way to change our caucus system, to tailor it to where we can make it more usable, or not usable, uh, more, uh, open to people, or to where they perceive that they're not being, um, or not given the opportunity, I guess? Is, is there, is there anything that we could do in that realm? Have we exhausted all facts there?
So we can do whatever we want. We just have to create towards the pace of life. So in talking with Brian McKinsey, if we move to a primary issue, we can go to a caucus in three years. Like, we're not sucking up, they will fulfill the obligation of doing a primary election for us. We just have to back with this.
Well, uh, let's do a two-for-one here. Let's, uh, let's keep the caucus, save the five thousand dollars, roll that into a city, um, waiver for individuals that want to, you know, for the elderly that don't need the other can, if you do the math, it's eighty-three people. You can get some waivers off of that, it gives us two years to try and fix the caucus system, or try a different system. And if for some reason, after two years, we can't. Fix it?
So with the caucus system, you have to buy that.
We have to be up and down?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, we have to create parties and we have to follow party lines.
Okay.
So.
So anyone with a federal job?
Uh, we have to create affiliations, we have to create groups, we have to create differentiation.
Can we come into one group and split off after, after the first?
I don't know.
That's, that's, I think, the thing that Eileen's trying to suggest, is that we explore those options.
Okay, so the, the only downside of that is we're only getting people who can come at night.
Well, and that would be my other thought, and is somehow for the other parties, she will figure out some of their ballots with somebody else. And that's where I think we need to.
What, what parties were we talking about?
When you talk about a Republican or Democrat caucus meeting, you can actually send your ballot with someone else. And, and so I don't know why you couldn't just stay to a similar type of situation. And again, I don't know why you want to, and then someone who can be able to run just basically can't make it stand. And again, if that's a problem with state law, why aren't we not changing state law? Because it is made for us, it's carved out for us.
What, one thing to consider is that, uh, most of the people that do come to caucus night tend to try and be more invested. Not that they always are, but, I mean, on several of the elections that I've seen. on several of the elections that I've seen, people that aren't, people that go into uh running, they're, they don't invest themselves, they don't come to meet the candidate, the candidates don't actually come to meet the candidates night. They're not invested into the process, and those, those candidates still garner way more votes than I think is, I, I'm shocked that they would garner that many votes. And so sometimes I, I do like the idea of having people that are trying to invest themselves into the community and, and get it to know, get to know candidates as they're, as we're whittling it down to, you know, who's gonna be in the, the end election. So that's one thing to consider.
Okay, so, so I will turn around and ask all of you, like, how would you direct the set? What would you recommend? Like, we have, we've been kicking this one around for, for quite some time, like, what, what do you want to see happen? Or are things fine?
Mayor, can I make a recommendation that we continue on with this subject at our next meeting? And that way the council has the opportunity to uh discuss amongst themselves, I should say, not with each other, uh, and go through their thoughts and their thought process, and we move to uh, what else at our next council?
Do you have a recommendation we can look for in this time?
Continue the discussion at our next meeting of changing the rules or changing.
Okay. I know, that's, that's fine, we can actually.
Who are the, who are the, is, is it just the council that votes on this ordinance?
Yes.
Unless there's a tie, obviously.
Right. Are there any terms on the table? Or I, whatever you guys want there?
I'd be curious to explain what you just asked, what we want to see the set do, what do we want to.
Well.
I thought we'd gone to them a couple of times, so.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I would love to know, like, what, what do you want to see happen with candidates? Or are things fine?
I would like to, I would like to see if uh candidates can, can put their name in the, on the ballot or for caucus night, but not have to be present. I would like to see that. I would like to see if we can change the names from Pinecone and Sagebrush to Nonpartisan One and Nonpartisan Two. So it just intrinsically becomes more apparent what it is, and not, not, not um confusing to a newcomer.
Yep.
Those are two things that I would like to see.
Okay. Any others?
I, I just, I think it would still be an idea to explore having the entire group of me together to start. And then you can nominate two, four, six, however many people reach office um in that meeting, and then basically draw, draw, and, or, and go to, you know, Nonpartisan One, Nonpartisan Two. And I recognize that it costs a little bit because you have a larger space, but I think a small space that we have, there are some times where we have meetings in this building that have been over calling and I think it, it sways people from coming, and they feel like they don't want to commit to coming to something that may or may not have space for them.
Okay. Any others, Sean?
No, sir, I'm just playing devil's advocate on both sides to truly understand the whole picture from analytical from both sides. Um, thank you, sir.
Okay. So I have a, a suggestion, a motion, I have a motion, yeah, a suggestion to table this uh for the next council meeting. Do I have a motion to table for that?
I'd like the motion to table it for two weeks.
Motion, Sean, go to second. I second, okay, second from Mark. Any further discussion on that motion? All favor of tabling this um item for two weeks, all favors say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that will be discussed in two weeks. I remember six point two, approved in item resolution point point five dash zero four, adopting an updated consolidated fee schedule. Again, let me be clear that this would be, this is encompassing the recycling program. Um, do we have a, a motion or comments on this?
Um.
We, we need a motion on this, or?
Just, just a comment on it, and that is that um the, the, the extra money that's required to, to join the recycling program, I think is, is, is an investment into um, you know, the whole system. And I, I, not normally, naturally, I'm overly excited about recycling, but in this case, it, it does make sense to me. It, I've, I've, I've changed my opinion from probably, you know, ten years ago. Now I'm, I'm in favor of it, but that's just.
I would also go a step further, hopefully, because we have a lot of neighbors that have multiple black cans. Hopefully, this is a cost savings to them, that they would scale back to one black can and one, one uh blue can, and it would be in general savings to them.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
As someone who hasn't been here, by virtue of having that EU, I am required, perhaps, I'm required to task, to have two black cans. Um, I, I, why? My question is, why?
Uh.
Because if we can have a cycle in hand, and all that's the contribution to the cycle. That obviously means less waste, as you just said.
Right, well, let's transfer ways. I, I think that's a valid question, I think that should be something that could be addressed in the justice at future meetings.
But if we're, if we're adopting the consolidated fee schedule today, wouldn't today be the opportunity to?
No, because that would be, that would be achieving ordinance of the EU, of the EU ordinance.
Okay.
That's required for EU.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to just make a couple of comments. Went up and took a tour of the facility, and I was very impressed, I'm not a recycling guy, but after leaving there, I think very impressed. I would approve residents that maybe you're questionable on recycling, get with Nathan, and do a tour.
Actually, we could probably take a step further and just have like a fruit heights afternoon, and have a, have a block where people could go up and just go on a tour. I'm sure Nathan and his team could comment something on those lines, and you can hold your caucus there. Do we have to work for a conference meeting?
No.
No, we don't have to work for a meeting.
But that wasn't funny. But with that, oh, there was some very good information they gave. They also shared with us the advertising of how you know what to do with what, and that, and the marketing materials, which were excellent. So when I came back from that meeting, I decided to try this recycling thing. And probably every two weeks, I'd make a trip up there with my backpack and my explorer full of recycling. But what a shock, when I left can, I, the most I had is two bags, where before I would have to put garbage bags in neighbors' cans. But it really opened my mind on how much is recyclable. And with what they showed us, they resell so much stuff that helps with, with everything. So I would just encourage you, we, we should go up there and take a tour and be open to it. And they're very helpful, but I think those that have two black cans could very easily, if they got, when they use the blue can and they use it halfway, you can probably get rid of the black can. Most of the time, you're going to take the garbage out of the house because it starts to stink, because we're not moving it fast enough. So those are just some things, and I started this, I think it was the first week of January, when I went up there and met Nathan, called that. And I mean, it's, it's really been a high, and I was never into recycling.
Thank you. Um, I would introduce a motion, um, six point two.
Make a motion to a per revolution under twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, adopting a updated solid data fee schedule.
Second.
Nice.
So I have a motion from another, and a second from Gary. Any further discussion? Here, that's you.
Uh, Mark, or Councilmember Mark Cotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Eileen Moss?
Aye.
Um, Councilmember Gary Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sean Stevenson?
Aye.
Thank you. We've got item number six point five, approved in item bid to outsourced um IT provider. Questioning the matter of course, you bugger. Sorry. Uh, do you have any questions, or do we have a motion to table for that?
Um, in talking to Darren, um, it, it's, it's become apparent to me that Darren isn't entirely happy with the services that he's getting. The service that Intuitive IT would be providing is a similar enough cost that it's, it, it doesn't, to me, because Darren is, is, is the, is the person that is the manager over, over a lot of this and has to integrate himself with this. I mean, obviously, all of us, every resident has to work with, with this, but because Darren is the one that is bringing it forward, I, I'm more inclined to support him and his desire to change.
Great, and I would agree, I've had a couple of conversations with him on that, and looked at the bids, and in my mind, I thought Intuitive was, was the way it would be going based on what I read. And I think we need to look at their expertise, map with the three members, and we know what we're getting now.
Great, do I have a motion?
I guess not.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So I think we'll approve, approve to outsourced IT provider.
Okay, I have a motion for Mark, and a second from Sean, would that be?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on this motion? All favor of approving the bid for Intuitive IT as our new outsourced provider, all favors say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, either two. Um, approve of March eighteenth, sorry, hey, you asked me to put the timestamp on all those motions. I totally forgot what that last one, my bad. And we've got like seventeen, half minutes, opening and closing, sorry about that, dude. Approve March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, some council minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the amendments of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I second, second from Mark, all favor, all favor of approving the minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
During the table items, uh, covering items, um, sorry, uh, the first one, Greenways, they started, uh, equal first design for two weeks, do we allow residents to kind of get those tickets?
For the?
Greenways.
Oh, for the vouchers?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, residents can come up here through the fourteenth and get the voucher.
To the twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Okay, thank you, um, second of the Easter night, ten AM, City Hall, would you please be here, City Council, anything to worry about? Uh, April twenty-second, City Council meeting, looks like we've already got items, so that'll be a fun one. Um, April twenty-fifth, a plan question. Um, gonna move on to item number ten, which is City Council report. Do you think people?
Yeah, the only thing I have is on Founder's Day or Asian Party, put, put that together, they have confirmed the ban for this year, they also confirmed the car show, and the car show will show people, they did a much better job last year. And they're kind of working on maybe a surprise, we'll see how that holds for another event.
I love surprises, Steve. Um, great, thank you, um, and we have a date for Founder's Day, what is that?
Yes.
August?
August, uh, twenty, I think it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, um, that's good, then, twenty-third.
August twenty-third, excellent, thank you. Gary, you ready?
I don't.
Great, Eileen?
Our, uh, move to the parent committee also known as the physical court council is excited to um bring over a few, uh, few judges to our state council.
Great.
And we're hoping to take the second meeting every month for three minutes, and uh try and hold it safe, uh, for council on the community.
Great, so let me just, don't check that, so that's the second Tuesday every other month.
Correct.
So that will be on the agenda for three minutes for a safety.
Ever.
So. So they will be on the agenda every other month on second Tuesday.
Yes.
For the safety.
Yes.
Great.
Eileen, will this month?
Yeah, starting this month, or?
Uh, I think starting this month, I'll need to verify that.
Okay. Okay. Any others, Sally?
Um, we met again with our fine committee on the uh possibilities of memorials, and there are, um, are any changes?
Great. Sean?
In the neighborhood of Parks and Rec, I met with Don, or I reached out to Don Anderton, I've been requested about, he's a representative from the Davis High School team, they're gonna come up and be doing some trail maintenance here in the next month or so.
Excellent.
We're gonna, we haven't hit an exact date, but we're gonna get something in the books and meet some of our fire.
Seriously. I have received probably three this weekend, one last week, of compliments on the parks. The baseball games are fantastic. I'm looking at you, Mary, I'm looking at you just because you're the lead.
I have a opinion, it's definitely the city staff, um, and they're.
It really has, they're, they went from four to eight in, in a matter of a couple of weeks, so. Are they, as well?
This, I'm just wondering, are they gonna be available to, for use this summer?
There are.
There are really no.
Now?
There are already reservations, there's some.
Okay.
Um, I have nothing else, I believe you've got something to talk about, but, uh, so City Council reports. Jeff, what, you have anything to work?
No, sir.
Lane, thanks for all you guys are doing, man.
Absolutely.
Uh, great.
So the last small storm, we had a, one of the small iron nationals, it blew up the truck that we were in, and the estimate on that is about ten thousand dollars. That's gonna be quite a cost, and then the final relies on the skid steer, that's another ninety-five hundred bucks. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be some repairs coming through.
Are those budget items for this year, or are they gonna be requested next year?
They, they need to get done this year, Darren's gonna play you on the, on the budget side of it, but it's, they're, they're unusable unless we get a repair, and then you, so.
Can you get out there with the shovel and the rake?
Okay.
I'll drive, but no.
Okay, Darren, go ahead.
So, uh, I'm on with that there, um, with our purchase of the, the ten wheel truck that we were this year, we would only, we're only gonna be able to purchase the can chassis, we're still waiting for the gator. Uh, the equipment will not be on, I think, for it, and the years will be running that um, over into next year, but I haven't talked to Karen about that, um, as we've talked about that, about it. Um, there will be a couple of amendments to the budget coming, um, one for solid waste, we can order the cans. We do have that money in the, the solid waste fund, and also will be continued
So Darren, do we have money there, just because we haven't spent it on the grant on them?
We have the money there, maybe we're gonna take it over, but we need to amend them, they're just showing that change to that, to that point, and then we'll carry over and add that, that cost to insurance.
Thank you, Darren.
Someone else to add to that, sorry, those are estimates, so I'm hoping that they go lower, but they could go a little higher than, if they do well, we, we look for them.
Can you bring us some bits on this? We don't want to sell this down, but can you, can you do it?
I, I can.
International is one of them that can get the front edge of the road, so we actually tried to take that to different places to get it. Over on that, we are, with that, and this is being with your cap, your fiscal cap.
Absolutely, I, I did all around the cap, and it was almost over the price of other shops, so.
Can you at least send us?
Yeah.
Some, for, so we can see it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Darren? We met at Parkton, do you want to talk about that?
Oh, yes, so, uh, Parkton and Cadesville, um, and the school district, we, we met this last week. Um, the school, the school district is looking to wanting to put in a lot of schools. Um, the skill, the school district is looking to wanting to put in a lap pool for the high schools. They want, uh, three communities to work with them on that, as far as, um, maybe taking some of the cost, that was not decided, or there was a cost hook. This would be an adorable, um, residents would be able to use it, um, in, in new labs, it's a lap pool, which they say is, there's fast lap pools, and then there's lap pools, this would be a fast lap pool, which means it's, um, averaging nine feet deep, with a constant flow of water circulating, um, so it doesn't slow down at the swimmers. It's frustrated, they are, um, and the cost of about fifty million dollars. With the school, uh, see, fifty.
Vegas, or farm?
No, it would be, it would be.
That is fifty million dollars. I have zero to fill this hole.
So, so where do they want to put it?
They would like to put it, uh, in the Farmington, um, Gately area.
And so not at a school?
Not at a school, um, they don't have, they don't have any school, I mean, they have property, um, this would if it does have property, or that, but they, uh.
So, a couple things, this would be a proposal, that would be a community base pool, the, the school district would do the upfront cost, uh, putting the pool in here, but then the municipal response would be ongoing maintenance of the pool. Um, it's just a proposal, uh, it sounded neat, but I don't know if that will get finalized. And, and Darren's bringing this to our attention, just so that you can be aware, something for the words that I can.
Thank you.
Is it strictly a lap pool, or would there be other types of pools I can do it, so there's just one.
If there were also would be a lap pool with a dotted eye, or a section that would be not as deep, it can be more, uh, swim lessons a little bit, a little bit lower, or be on edge, about three feet?
It, it, it would almost be, uh, it's all cool, because one of the other things they talked about with the lap pool, um, water temperature, and they want it a lot cooler, um, than just a swimming mess, uh, in all these pools, that it would be different. It's inside of it.
So if the school district is moving forward, taking along these lines, uh, it would be, it would be a, a, um, it would be on the ballot because they would want for it. Um, we're bringing this attention now, so if this happens, we would, as the municipal, would be on the hook for some of the maintenance costs, I've shared with Farmington and Cadesville, this is super pretty area, I don't know what's gonna happen with this, but I just wanted to be aware of it. It would be, they would, they would be wanting to prove quickly to get on the ship out, if it is something to do with.
So, um, with, on, with, the, our city would be on the hook with City Council approval, or without?
No, 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 absolutely, this is something that will come back, but.
This, this would have public carings, this would, there, there is a lot to, um, to this. We actually have one of the attorneys there, um, from Farmington, uh, who would just kind of start with, here's what cities would be required to do. Um, yeah, there would be public carings, there would be a lot of different things going on with that. Um, like Mayor said, this is a, this is an idea that the school district kind of came up with, and, um, wanted to see if the, the communities would be willing to make it a community pool.
We would, we would create a central Davis rec, not rec, but it would be a special service district, its own taxable entity, um, but we would be a part of it. Anyway, there's a lot of them going, so we'll just raise your attention, so that if we start bringing this, if it appears on agendas, you have some baseline information of what's in this stuff.
Thank you.
Um, anything else, Darren?
Uh, just, uh, we'll have, uh, a lot of items on the next, uh, council meeting, um, maybe our first meeting in May is we'll be about our, and, and approve it, and it about it. And then we'll do have our, without a week coming up, so I would probably first or next week be sending out a lot of information about that.
Great. Thank you, that is our last item on our agenda, I entertain motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Gary, Sean, all they're adjarring at nine fifteen, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Are you ready, Eric?